Mayor Eichel, Pro Tem Hanahan.
Here.
Trustee Brinton.
Here.
Trustee Klassen.
Here.
Trustee Inglehart.
Here.
Trustee Poston. Trustee Seifert.
Here.
May we please rise for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. The first item on the agenda is public comments. Persons desiring to make a public comment on items not on the agenda, please activate the raise hand function in the meeting program. Or Sheila, do we have any phone calls, voicemails, emails?
No, I did not hear from anyone today.
Did anyone raise their hand in the meeting program?
I do not show any raised hands.
Did anyone sign in?
We did. It's very exciting tonight.
Okay.
We have Dana Wood and Mandy DiCamillo, or Millo, I don't know. DiCamillo.
Do you want us to come up together?
Yes.
Yes, they're both speaking on transportation issues.
Would you mind coming up and taking a seat at the table and give us your name and your address, please?
Good evening. My name is Dana Wood. I live at 329 Riverfrontage Road, number 64 in Silt.
My name is Mandy DiCamillo. I live at 329 Riverfrontage Road, number 34 in Silt.
And I just lost what I was going to talk about, but anyway, I will just go off of memory. Good evening, trustees. Thank you for listening to my public comment tonight regarding transportation in Silt. I live in...
Excuse me, can you slide the speaker just a little bit closer to you?
Yeah. I live in the River Run community, just across the highway, and I'm here to talk to you about the importance of continuing the conversation and the work around transportation and public transportation primarily in Silt. Living in River Run is very isolating at times, and in order to get to a bus stop, there's really no safe way from that community to get to the bus stop. I'm fortunate that I do have a car, so I can drive everywhere, and I have to drive everywhere, whether it's to come to a restaurant in town, get on a bike path, or go to neighboring communities to do whatever shopping I need to do. There are some community initiatives around transportation, and I'm really encouraging the town to be involved and to listen. I think for me personally, if there was a better transportation system, safer connectivity from my neighborhood, I would be much more inclined to use the bus. I also work in transportation, so seeing the impacts that a good transportation system has on a community is vital, and the economic benefits, the safety benefits, the quality of life benefits are huge. And then on the opposite side, a community not having those amenities, I think the community suffers as a whole. And since Silt is a fast-growing community, there's lots of families moving here, lots of folks already who may or may not have two cars for, you know, more than two people in a house. I think it's even more important to start addressing those issues now. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. I am going to read mine because I don't have it memorized. So, good evening, trustees, and thank you for this opportunity to talk about transportation. I've been a resident of the River Run community for two years now, but I've lived in Garfield County for eight years, and love it. Anyway, I wanted to talk about local transportation because my employment requires me to travel seven days a week, and if I had easy access to a bus stop, I would definitely use it. So, again, living on the riverside of Silt, it's challenging to get to a bus stop unless I drive. So if I'm going to get in the car and drive, I'm just going to drive to my destination. So, walking on streets without sidewalks and not having a footbridge is a serious safety issue for me, so I will not risk that. Additionally, getting to a grocery store, I have to drive to Newcastle Rifle because the dollar stores don't offer fresh produce or other options. And so, again, I'm not going to walk on a street without sidewalks or go not use a footbridge, so I'm not going to take the bus to go get groceries. So, also, I think local transportation here in the community would benefit not only going to local restaurants or going to grocery stores, but also our public schools because it would be nice to have some of our teens not using Highway 6 to go to high school, take the bus, if that's an option. Also, I guess, just thank you for your attention, and as we age in this community, please keep public transportation a priority. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Is there anyone else listed on the...
There is not.
There's not, okay. Then the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which includes minutes of the February 24th, 2025 Board of Trustees Meeting and the IMTPR intragovernmental agreement for Regional Planning Commission for Transportation Planning. Does any trustees have any questions or comments on that? On either?
I have a question, though. Because the IMTPR, the previous Public Works Director went to those meetings. Do we have somebody who's going to...
I've been going to those meetings.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Because a lot of times they're on a Friday, which were closed, and it's kind of on my way.
Okay.
Maybe I missed this. How...
Back to the front range.
I'm sorry. How long have we been a part of this?
I think the IMTPR has been around for a number of years. You know, each part of the state is broken into one of the regional transportation groups, and there's a certain amount of funding that each region is given based upon a formula that they get to spend on projects. But probably one of the most important pieces that comes out of that regional transportation group is the identification of projects that need to be done. And as I mentioned in, I think, previously, you know, three of the top 10 projects in the region are interchanges in Garfield County, and one of which is Silt. The problem is, is there's not funding for a $60 million or $70 million interchange,
Right.
let alone times three.
But advocacy and participation in this seems like a good...
Yeah, it's basically, you know, a seat at the table to talk about the needs.
Right. It would be foolish to not, but certainly, okay. Sounds good to me.
What are the intended changes, Jim, with regard to the IMPRC? What is that sort of subgroup?
So, my understanding is there was some discussion that Summit County was going to be removed from our group, which, not to speak poorly of our neighbors to the east, but they vote no on anything that is west of their county. At least that was my experience in the couple of meetings that I've been at.
So Eagle, Pittkin, Garfield will all remain?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So you...
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Seifert to approve the consent agenda as presented, and that was seconded by trustee Brinton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do any board members have any conflicts of interest this evening?
No.
Does staff have any agenda changes this evening?
We do not.
Any trustees have any agenda changes this evening?
Yes, sir.
The next item on the agenda is the water plant construction update. Dan, come on up.
See, Steel is going up.
Yes. Thank you. Dan Galvin with Garni Construction. This month's update for the Town of Silt Water Treatment Plant, health and safety. Again, like to report that no safety incidents to date out at our construction site. We continue to work well with plant staff and visitors wearing PPE and high-vis clothing, and we continue with our controlled entry, watching vehicles and deliveries come and go through the gate. We continue with our weather awareness. Last few weeks, temperatures warmed up, and we continue to monitor essentially wet weather conditions, mostly rain as of late, and monitor daylight with the... Daylight savings as of late are this past weekend. It's a little bit later start time this week, probably the next few weeks to monitor that sun coming up in the morning and then allow us to work a little later into the evenings. Our construction progress, masonry is completed. About 99%, there's a little bit left, a little cleanup left for those guys to do, and that has allowed us to start flying in the structural steel for our roof, and the core gate metal steel is part of that roof as well. That activity should essentially wrap up for the, as far as it can go, this week. And then, as mentioned, excitedly, that our structural steel for our free-engineering metal building has started erection. Those guys were on-site last week shaking out some of the materials, and then today they actually had a crane on-site and started flying that steel onto the pad, and they're making good progress. As well, we've worked on our, essentially, our last yard pipe tie-in, and that is the filtered water from the new plant over to the existing, making the connection with some additional fittings and some gate valves so that we can complete that now and be ready to move water from the new plant to the old plant, and that'll allow us to keep that water flowing while we do some of the demo that we've talked about in past meetings in the existing plant. To comment on schedule, minimal weather impacts as of late. Again, those cold, that cold snap passed by. Now we just monitor, like I said, that wet weather for muddy conditions on-site. Similar to last month with our subcontractors that are on-site, a little more of the high-risk activities with the cranes flying steel and such over the small construction site that we have. So we're limited in the number of subcontractors that we have on-site at one time. So we're transitioning from our mason to the, our steel, our structural steel erectors, and like we said, now we're on with our metal building erectors flying steel around the site. We do have a few other trades coming and going where we can fit them into safe areas, and that includes our electrician. And as well with that schedule, we continue to track our September startup for the plant operations. To comment on budget, no real updates to our contingency log that we presented the previous meeting. A little bit of housekeeping with that, cleaning up some of our line items, and then making some additional notes on there so that our other partners, engineer, and town staff can follow some of those changes more clearly that we are making. Continue with a few electrical upgrades from some of the document upgrades, document updates that we've been doing. And then we continue with our research and planning into the inlet screen with the engineering partners and town staff as well. And again, that discussion just continues. Today, we had a meeting with the vendor where they were able to continue to describe their product, and they've provided a couple contacts so that plant staff can reach out to other plants in the country that are using the equipment to get their input on how well that equipment operates. Billing to date, $12.9 million billed. That's about 53% of the billing. Represents a lot of the equipment that's on-site and the constructions that's taken place, as well as the remainder of the process equipment that is on order and being fabricated as we speak. With that, glad to open it up for questions.
Any questions? Anyone in the board?
I don't have anything tonight.
I have two questions, Dan.
Yes, sir.
Actually, Joe, you mentioned in your own manager's report, managing to work around extended water outage periods as the new plant gets connected, but that that's going to be more challenging as weather gets warmer?
It should, I think we are tying now is one of the main processes, and they seem like they worked through it, and we were able to keep everybody in water, so...
That was actually going to be my question. Is there a chance to do it sooner so that we, as water usage ramps up in the summer, that this work is done, without disrupting other aspects of the schedule, of course?
Yes, and we've mentioned it before, but we have monthly, currently monthly meetings, and they will be more frequent as we get closer. But we meet monthly with plant staff to talk about upcoming outages. So we do have the, one more for our pipe tie-in, and then we'll have another one upcoming where we're going to move the skids inside the existing plant that make water. So again, planning on taking one out at a time, going over the operation with the plant staff, and then fortunately with the few shutdowns we've had, they have been test runs for plant staff to manage half their, having half their operation available. And then it's been a data collection for them as far as how fast we're drawing down the tanks in town and how for them to manage that. So yes, in all our shutdowns, continuing the, minimizing the shutdown, being prepared, and then having the backup plan to bring the plant back up online is the highlights of those conversations.
I have one other question.
Yes, sir.
I'm asking you to be a bit of a fortune teller here. So, with the recent introduction of some tariffs, is that going to have a financial and/or time impact on our water plant?
Currently, it's something we have looked into. Garni sends the notices down the pipeline. We've made contacts with our vendors, and due to the way we phased this in, that we started writing contracts early, no, a lot of this should not affect us. The remaining process equipment is coming out of Canada, but we've made calls to them, and currently they don't see any impacts to that equipment coming over.
And what's our process going to be if that changes? In other words, do we speed up the supply chain in order? If they tell you those price increases are coming in two weeks, do we rush?
Yeah, that would be one, one response. But again, we're 95% bought out. So that's, we've purchased 95% of the equipment, and it's either on-site, in transit, or currently being fabricated or already in-line, that the materials have been secured for it. So like I said, currently we do not see it as an impact. And then we're already, with the state funding, it's an AIS or an American Steel project, so a lot of stuff we've already had to, you know, seek that benefit of finding American-made products.
Yeah, and I remember you had said you're going to find ways to spend the budget. So, I hope that you would keep any of those circumstances in mind as things might fluctuate.
Yes, yeah, that'd be great. That'd be a good use of those resources, right, to speed up procurement, should it arise.
For the new, it sounds like everything that you've handled in the past is good.
On track, good to go, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is manager and staff reports. Now, turn this over to manager man.
You have my report in the packets. I did fail to talk about the fact that CML does have registration open for the annual conference, June 24 through June 27, in Breckenridge. Obviously, it's a pretty hefty time commitment, and it's not really, I don't know that I would suggest that you would, we would commute back and forth. So it would probably involve a night or two of lodging as well. I would encourage any of you to attend.
I'll go.
Okay.
I can get away with going and doing stuff like that for a couple of days, once or twice a year.
Right.
I already do conferences like that, so...
Anybody else?
I may be in another location, so I may be gone.
Okay.
Do I register?
We'll get you registered.
You register me?
I'll get you registered.
And then I deal with the lodging part, or...
Do you want to be at the conference hotel? Or do you, I mean, you can, we can set up lodging for you, or we can...
You do, because that way you can have casual conversations with a lot more people, walking the halls, getting food, et cetera, et cetera, that...
If I'm going to go all the way there, I should try and do that.
That's where some of the more interesting conversations tend to happen.
Well, it's just, it's easier from the perspective that all of a sudden, if you have to do some work, it's easy to get to you.
Yeah, oh, I forgot this. You can hop on the elevator, get back to your room. Oh, there's that folder, there's that paper, whatever it may be.
Well, and just, we can talk more offline, whatever's, whatever works, but...
Okay. I'll let you, I'll look at my schedule. All right. The only, I mean, I would just highlight also that tomorrow night is the rifle leadership forum. I don't know if any of you RSVP'd for that. I think, you know, keeping the local leaders forum going, where it's casual conversation, people getting together, elected officials, it's a good thing. So I would encourage you, even if you didn't RSVP, just show up. I plan on going, and if you don't want, we can carpool or we can just all drive separately.
Did anyone else already RSVP? I did.
I have not.
I failed to RSVP.
I can't remember if I did. I know I put it on my calendar, but I know that I'm working. So I may, I think I did with a caveat that I may not be there.
TBD.
So depending on what time I get back tomorrow, I might touch base with you as far as...
Yeah, let me know, when you know.
I think I'll go, but I don't know that I'll carpool.
It just depends on when I get back.
That's fine. You know, and it's from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at the ute. If you get there for an hour, that's fine. I mean, we had people coming in and out of ours last fall.
Yeah, we ended up staying open a little bit later.
Yeah.
Just because many people had to roll in a little bit later. That's the life of the working class, I guess.
And then I would just throw in there that hopefully you had a chance to look at the Seventh Street Pedestrian Bridge, where we are. It's coming together. It'd be a really neat project, but we are going to file a CDS for the plaza part because that can happen independently outside of the bridge, and it would be a nice addition in the downtown as well, and...
Can I ask a question about that?
You may.
It says you, the plan would be to simply grass over the area, which I think is great, but could we put just like some stepping stones? Or is it going to be maintained at all when you say grass it over?
It would be maintained. It would be cut lawn.
Or...
It'd give, it'd give the Public Works crew another task to do.
Well, I was thinking, you know, even just like some repurposed flat rocks going across so that people, you know, don't destroy it as much. And it's mutually beneficial, so that just jumped out at me.
We could, I mean, we could easily put a pathway in there.
Right, something temporary.
Yep.
And, yeah, reclaim, anyways, that was my only thought.
ADA compliance would be another factor there, though.
Who'd what?
ADA compliance.
Okay.
Oh, wow, yeah, then you get, yeah.
Especially if it's a sort of community space.
Well, I was just thinking like temporarily, they were talking about grassing it over while it's just kind of, you know, becoming a plaza more than a street, right? So, I think if someone had, if someone needed ADA accommodations, I believe that the surrounding area of our town would provide adequate, you know, passageway for someone to navigate right there. So that would just be more like if they want to walk around and utilize it as a plaza area, there would be a place to step, but...
Where are they thinking of moving the water fill to?
Water station?
Yeah.
We would...
You got the other one on that street. You going down that way, or?
We have the two over on home, or Front Street.
Right.
The middle one rarely gets used. Most of our commercial vendors use the west one. So we'll move the small bulk water to where the east, bulk water is.
Will it be a way of getting in, getting in and out of there?
Yeah, even if we have the plaza, Front Street will stay open where you can go all the way through on Front Street.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, I see what you're going to do, okay.
And is Front Street going to get realigned?
We are, that's still in the grand master plan.
It's a concept.
We have been continuing to have conversations with the Jensen's regarding working with them to either relocate their business or tear down the business and buy some of the land so we can do the realignment.
Sounds like a great concept.
Any other questions from anyone about the manager's report?
No, I mean, the 2.2 million is just for the pedestrian portion between Main and Front Street?
Correct.
Okay.
The plaza.
I have a comment slash question about the AGNC topic. So I used to be on that subcommittee or that group. The challenge is that their meetings are four and a half hours long. And I think like most elect, local elected officials, we all have day jobs. Whereas the other AGNC participants, and hey, good for them, this is their job. And I'm wondering out loud if there's a possibility of having a separate, I don't know, review and comment session or a subset of that meeting that could be condensed where local elected officials could participate in that brief part, but then defer to staff to participate in the rest. I'd like to be able to participate, but I can't get fired from my day job to do it. And I'm gathering that's a common sentiment. Does anyone here have four and a half free hours on any given day? That's not named Jerry.
Yeah. It's not currently retired.
Yeah, retirees do.
It's a, it's a, I think it was three hours when I was in it before, and I'm going back a few years. It was just, I could not continue to do it. It's just not feasible. So anyway, hopefully, Jim, you can bring that. I know the county commissioners have been asking at every given opportunity for more local participation. I just think they need to change the format or the timing of it so that we can. And I'm guessing a lot of other towns are...
Yeah, maybe, maybe it's that there's a, it's a four and a half hour meeting, and the first hour is the part where the elected officials show up.
That would be great.
I don't know. I can bring it up.
And I'm thinking all the other towns, their elected officials are similarly have day jobs, as far as I know, from the elected officials I know. I don't think any of them have four and a half hours on any given day to do it. The other things I wanted to talk about briefly from the manager's report, the Rue Ranch Solar Farm, is anybody going to that next meeting on the 23rd of April? Let me know if you want me to join you.
Okay, all right.
Because, you know, I brought it up to the commissioners at the mayor's meeting. I brought it up at the chamber luncheon.
It's always, in these types of situations, it's always better to have elected officials speaking with elected officials, even though the planning and zoning isn't, I don't think they're, they're not elected, but they're appointed by elected officials in that kind of elected official category. It just carries more water than it is, than, than just staff.
Okay, yeah, it's impactful. It's a significant-sized plot of land that's going to be turned into a solar array. And I think we should do what we can to prevent that. It's zoned for housing, and it should be used for it. The other thing I had a question about was the pending housing needs assessment. We know we're going to get the report on that, and then we're going to do the open house for it. Have we started generating any next steps in terms of what we're going to be doing with this information? How is it going to flow into code updates, any zoning stuff, sharing bits of it with developers, things like that?
We have not mapped anything out as of yet. But we know that, I mean, it's going to flow into a rewrite of chapters 16 and 17 of the Silt municipal code. It's going to require us to update our comprehensive master plan. And all those things will impact that development community.
Okay. The only other question I had was for you, Nicole. What is the, what are the latest updates and the next steps on the website, project renewal, change, evolution? project renewal, change, evolution?
Yes, Manager Man and I have been, we talked about it last week, and needing to get together, um, a little more information. We have a couple of larger projects that we're trying to button up before we dive into something new. We did get the Discover Silt website transferred over to the town ownership. So that has progressed, um, and then we're gonna look at what we can do to better integrate, um, our tentative new website with the Discover Silt website, and see if we can, um, figure out the best way to use the same hosting and the same navigation tools for both. So, we're looking into it, and we'll hopefully have some progress in the near future.
I had hoped to have a proposal this evening for your review wi- with an organization that would help us go through a process to discuss a brand. What is the Town of Silt? What is the brand? Uh, this is a piece of, of the, the puzzle that's important to understand before we design a website around. We have to know what we are, and what we plan on being. Uh, but unfortunately, we didn't get that on the agenda for any discussion.
Okay.
But I see, I see that as one of our first steps, along with everything that Director Santano was talking about, you know, in terms of mapping this all out. I've never built a website, so I really, you know, I just know what I don't like about websites.
And we don't have that much time this evening, so you can.
Well, uh, when it comes to our website, I can just tell you that, you know, first generation website left 20 years ago.
I like nice pictures on websites, you know, everybody likes nice photography. It's just my two cents. Everybody likes it. Fishing pictures, pictures of the, you know, nature preserve.
Derek likes functionality.
We, well, everybody likes functionality, but we also, you know.
I think we're gonna.
If it's not functioning, you can stare at those nice photos.
I had hopes that our, our July, or July, our March 24th meeting was going to deal with some branding discussion. I think we, I, I don't know that we have anything else that we wanted to talk about from a more global perspective. We may have a, just a general discussion about the website, uh, on the 24th in a work session. Just to kind of lay some of this out there, and then Derek, you can utilize some of your expertise.
Happy to help, but I'm also happy to hear that it, that there is work being done, and it is, it is in progress. I agree with you, I think branding is an essential first step, because everything else trickles down from that.
Yes.
Functionality, visuals, aesthetics, um, languages, things like that. How the, the, the information flow and the user flows, all are derivative of what our branding is. You know, we wanted to work for our residents, and our local businesses, and developers. So it's, what do we want to be when we grow up, and how does the website reflect that?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Next item on the agenda is updates from the board and board comments. I will start with Trustee Engelhardt.
Sorry, I'm just making notes about the 24th there, thank you. I don't, I don't think I have anything. I'm, I'm planning on attending those, uh, events, and I appreciate everything that you guys are doing in the town. I already asked my question about the little plaza area, but I think that's just kind of of minor importance, so, I think that's it right now. Looking forward to spring.
Thank you. Trustee Brenno.
Not really, just a daily savings time to be aware of when people are out a little bit later, this, that, and the other. Safety, slow down, all that good stuff we always talk about. But not, nothing major.
Trustee Classic?
Alright, I have a couple things, you know, based on the, uh, public comments earlier. I know that the Town of Silt isn't, you know, participating in the RAFDA board. Is that something that we want to do in the future? It's just kind of a general.
I think there's some discussion that's being currently floated around the community to re, uh, energize the concept of us becoming a member of RAFDA, which would I believe then get us a seat on the board. Um, my understanding is that, that it's kind of a non-starter until the town approves a quarter cent sales tax.
I know a little bit about RAFDA. Uh, all, all of the, um, member jurisdictions, you know, they, they became member jurisdictions by vote of, uh, the people for a sales tax. And wh- what that number is, I think, varies, but usually it's closer to 1%. I don't know, uh, you know, each town is a little bit different. I think Aspen's up to their maximum. I know Carbondale and Glenwood are probably pretty close to the max on that, which I, I hope I'm not miss- speaking, but I think it's, it's closer to, uh, maybe it is a quarter, but I, I think it's, it could go up to a 1% sales tax. And, and then in 2018, or, no, I was testing, it was the 2020 property tax vote. Uh, all of the, the member jurisdictions also have a, a property tax, which, um, isn't a huge amount. I've, I've, I don't know what the mill levy is off the top of my head, but, so those are two taxes that RAFDA, um, has on its member jurisdiction. So everybody except for unincorporated Garfield County, um, is, um, and, but I believe Eagle, Pickin', Aspen, Snowmass, all the way up to Newcastle are member jurisdictions. So Rifle is not, unincorporated Garfield County is not, and the Town of Silt is not. Um, and I know that RAFDA has actively, you know, for years tried to get Rifle to become a member jurisdiction. I don't know the discussions with, with Silt, but. So there are maybe two, two different taxes now.
Okay, so that's, so that's good to know, that we would have to have a tax to do that. And I, and I know in the past, the board always said, no, because the ridership, you know, that in Silt just wasn't, wasn't there, but, you know, I think more people are riding it now than they ever have been, so.
I mean, obviously, if Rifle joined, you'd be a, a, a vacuum, not a member jurisdiction. There'd probably be some benefits Rifle joining, even if Silt did not, but, um, I think it would make more sense if that was bundled together, but.
That makes sense, yeah.
And I think, you know, in light of some of the comments from citizens earlier, ultimately, it's something that the town's going to have to consider. In, in term, I mean, Parachute has, uh, Para, which is locally operated that can get people from Parachute up to Rifle and move people around. Um, we'd, you know, we don't have anything similar to that. Um, I know that there was someone that floated that a different regional transportation group should be formed for Western Garfield County. That would not be something I would recommend, cause there's already a operating entity.
Why reinvent the wheel?
Why reinvent the wheel?
To cover the same area?
To cover the same area.
So then I guess one concern I have is watching people walk across this overpass, cause that's really unsafe for them.
No one.
And so, like, eh, how do we advocate for that to stop? And do we have to, do, do we have to fork over 1% tax, or could we figure out some other way? But I do think it's definitely worth reassessing, so I appreciate you raising the.
No, if people that are over in Riverrun, or the tiny homes now that would want to ride the buses, it is a walk, it's a little bit further walk to get to it, but they can go up just past the Holiday Inn, there's the underpass. There's actually a ni- I haven't, I hadn't walked that, took quite a while. Had my dogs at dog park, my car didn't start, so I had to walk them all back to the house from over there, cause there's nobody there, to jumpstart the car right away, and walk, use that path. And the path actually is pretty nice, it goes up, goes up to just right there at 16th Street, I believe is where the intersection is. And then from there, they could walk to that bus stop that's across from, over by the post officer, the bus stop there. And so they could utilize that bus stop, and that's a much safer walk. It is a little bit longer to walk there versus walking over to the fire station, but really, it's probably not that much further in the grand scheme of the walk. But it is a walk, it's, there's not a stop currently over there. Um, for RAFDA to have a stop over by River, over by the tiny homes, would probably entail some kind of major infrastructure change over there, that I don't know that RAFDA would want to do. There, and I, we can't afford it, I don't know, we could afford it in our budget to have a spot for the buses to turn around over there, cause currently there isn't.
The only trouble is, Mer locks that gate now.
For walking?
Well, for walking, yeah, you can walk.
You can walk?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you're care, uh, yeah, you can walk around that.
I walked through it, there was no, there was no gate, there was no gate that was locked through that area that I saw.
All that Mer property is being locked up.
But the trail runs east and west along the highway.
Runs on the highway.
Come through that way, but yeah, you'd have to be, you have to come back and around, but.
Well, yeah, you could, you go under the underpass, and then there's a trail that runs along the thi-
Exactly, yeah.
Comes up along his property, and then goes up by the storage units up to 16th Street. If you were to walk it, I think you'd see what I'm talking about, if you go, if you're down that area.
The bridge.
Yeah, you go under the bridge, and as soon as you come off the bridge, you make an immediate left, and there's a pretty good tra- it's a nice trail, you, I walked up along there.
I've never walked that, I thought that.
It does, it used to just cut up through the parking lots, is that what you're thinking, Jerry? Cause I think that's how, usually when it was open, you could, used to be able to drive through there, I mean.
Yeah, that's why they got the armhole on the other side.
But yeah, there, it's just, it's a much safer way to walk, and there is a bus stop that's over in that area that if people were wanting to use the bus, that's the way I would advise going versus you playing Frogger across the bridge.
The only trouble is, you gotta walk down Highway 6 to get to the bus stop.
Well, then maybe we look at doing some kind of.
Yeah, you either got to cross the highway, walk in front of Master Petroleum, and then cut back.
Well, I wouldn't recommend that, you better off walking.
But you can't, cause that, in Elly's, that's, there's no pathway there. That's the ditch right there, so you have to walk across Highway 6, go down in front of Master Petroleum, and then cut back again.
And maybe we.
That's the only problem with that, so.
And I was just gonna say, maybe.
It's still safer than walking.
Well, yeah, it is, over the bridge, yes.
But no, that's something we look at, maybe.
To the earlier point, just that those trails, if, you know, as a town, maybe we could make sure that they're clearly marked, so that people know where they can go, and that they're not trespassing on private property and things like that, so we as a town could help enable the pedestrians to.
Isn't there a sign at the corner of 16th and?
There is.
There's si- there's some signage, but unless somebody's used it, or walked it recently, you may not realize where it goes.
Yeah. There's a sign that shows the underpass, whatever it is.
I think we've got a couple of different options, in terms of those local elements of getting people to the buses, but they all depend on having more buses.
Mm-hmm.
A more robust schedule is gonna generate more riders. We know more people would prefer to use the bus, but the challenge right now with the existing RAFDA schedule is, it's minimal.
And the only way that's gonna change is if we were to become members, and Rifle were to become a member, really.
Right, and, and maybe we can talk with some folks from Rifle tomorrow night about it.
See, I was just about to say.
Just keep, just keep, keep engaging it, yeah, just say, hey, we wanna, we wanna get into.
That also sounds like realistic bicycle access.
Oh, it is, 100%.
From over there to the bus.
Oh, it is, that's.
So, you know, if it's clearly marked.
I know a lot of people that ride that, when they take, they ride to go over to that side, to like, go to the dog park and stuff like that.
And, and maybe if there are more bus routes, in theory, KOA has a golf cart that brings people over, similar to what Miners Claim does for the folks. You know, mid, there could be options like that.
Yeah.
As the pedestrian bridge, before it gets built.
Right.
Cause once that happens, then those problems are solved, but that's what, thinking way too far ahead. I think in the near term, we need some more data on the current, current usage volume of the existing bus routes, and we need to make a commitment to get integrated with RAFDA, or to start strategizing building a replacement. And I, I agree with Manager Man, the, the easiest, cheapest, quickest path is to get integrated with RAFDA. Gets us a seat at the table on their board, it gives us input as to how these routes are evolving. Right now, we're on the outside looking in.
Yeah, the financial burden on the town to create its own versus getting more coverage by RAFDA is definitely less by getting more coverage from RAFDA.
And there are a lot of issues to resolve, and, as, as far as being a member of RAFDA, but we can't resolve them from the outside looking in.
Correct.
We gotta have a seat at the table. I think anything we participate in needs to be, if we're putting money into it, we should have a seat at the table. We did it with the chamber, we're talking about doing it with RAFDA, that should be our sort of modus operandi going forward. So that as.
I don't know if you gentlemen, um, realize that to be part of RAFDA, it would have to be on the ballot, because it's a, a tax increase, and so the people will have to vote on it.
Yep.
Yep.
And when's our next election?
November is.
So this is a great time to start talking about it, right? So that we can get it onto the ballot?
Yeah, I think it's still worth a discussion, for sure.
Right.
You know, we, we may decide we don't want to do it, but it's still worth the discussion.
And it feels like we need it now, but maybe we should get some data to back that up, right? But, cause it does seem like, maybe the pre- you know, previous years, it wouldn't have been worth it to this town. But may, but now, it does seem like it, but I don't, I guess that, that's just, I, that's not very data-driven.
On some kind of a survey about what people would be potentially using if there was more coverage versus what's currently, because what's current usage doesn't necessarily reflect what would be done if there was more coverage.
Well, two people tonight said I would.
Exactly.
So.
I'm guessing they have neighbors that are in similar situations.
Yeah.
Well, we'll start with getting some ridership numbers and start a dialogue.
Great.
And then.
Did you have other comments?
Yes, and have we resolved the Center Town Homes Park? And, and on that same note, you know, the town still has a park sign there that says Town of Silt. I feel we should pull that sign down.
We have not resolved that issue, and it is now in the hands of our capable attorneys.
Oh, okay. It's still like to sign down, anyway.
Center Town Homes decided they were gonna forward it to their attorneys, so we.
Okay, okay, one of those deals.
Yep.
Alright.
So, it is in the hands of our attorneys.
I'm, I'm not up to speed on, on the issue at the moment, but happy to look into.
No, that's fine, but now, yeah, I mean, now I know where it's, where it's at, at the moment. And, um, after work, as I was walking home, I wa- a, a citizen came and, and talked to me, and his comments were, y- you know, that he was unhappy with the code enforcement in the town, or lack thereof, and he wasn't very happy with the staff or the board of trustees, because he felt that progress wasn't being made, or enough progress wasn't being made toward code enforcement. So he's, you know, for, for what it's worth, just wanted to say that.
And, and I would, uh, I recognize the concern. Uh, we need to hire a new code enforcement officer. And Director Santano and I met on that today to have a, a discussion about it, and what employment looks like, uh, for that position. And then it's going to come back to the board, for the board to prioritize what it is, you, what parts of the code you want enforced first, and how strict you want to get.
Got you. Alright, and the only other thing I had was I had somebody, one of the businesses down there, ask, ask if Main Street could be s- swept.
Yes, it's been, we can get on that. We've swept it three or four times, but then it snowed.
Oh, I, yes, I understand, yes, yes. When people park, it's difficult, you know, so. Anyway, then, that's all I had, and, you know, thank you, town staff, for all the good work you guys do.
Trustee Seifer?
Nothing else.
Short and sweet. I have no comments either, so. Uh, with that, I move to adjourn.
Well.
Into executive session.
The, the attorney is having heartburn over there.
Well, I, I was just, uh, we, we don't want to close the meeting, or adjourn the meeting, because then the meeting's over, so, uh, I, I think the normal course is that you, you just move to go into executive session, which, you know, by motion of the board. And then, uh, we don't necessarily have to return to open session, uh, so I think for all intents and purposes, the, the open session part of the meeting's over, but you don't want to adjourn the meeting unless executive session's a, a separate meeting.
I take it all back. I say that a lot. Uh, then I move to go into executive session to discuss the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of any real, personal, or other per, property interest under CRS Section 24 dash 6 dash 4024A. Corral Mobile Home Park, Roy Moore, Harland, Anderson, and Astaro Properties.
Second?
Nope, Engelhardt.
Uh, motion was made by the mayor pretend to go into executive session, and that was seconded by Trustee Engelhardt. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries you. Motion carries unanimously.